City of Sanford, City Commission Work Session, Monday, June 27, 2016, 4:00 p.m. Railroad Depot Room, 2nd floor, Sanford City Hall, 300 North Park Avenue, Sanford, Florida.
As we start the meeting, we do have some important business to take care of, and that is the introduction of the new accreditation manager for the police chief. And to have the police chief introduce her, I just want you to get to know her.
Okay. Commissioner, Mayor, I'd like to introduce you to Cynthia Talton, who is our new accreditation manager. And in addition to Cynthia's responsibilities as accreditation manager, she'll also be providing legal advice and legal experience as she is also a practicing attorney.
Wow.
She's one of those people with the J.D. after her name.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Former prosecutor here in Seminole County.
Okay, all right.
She needs to make sure that the police department stays accredited.
Yes.
Welcome to the police department and the city.
Thank you.
Can I give us your background?
I've been practicing 12 years. I did six years at the state attorney's office. There, I had over 50 jury trials from order to verdict with about an 85% success rate. I did first-degree murders, high profiles, carjackings. Sorry.
Hang on, you got it, Florida. I might have some more.
And then drug cases.
I like the style of pause.
And some drug cases, lots of drug cases, actually. And then I left there. I went into private practices where I've been representing major banks and lenders, Wells Fargo, J.P. Morgan Chase, all the big ones in the wake of America, in foreclosures and bankruptcy. And then I left there, and I came back to Sanford. I was there attorney while I was at the state attorney's office, so I loved them so much that I came back.
Wonderful, that's good news.
That's great.
Well, thank you very much. If there's ever anything we can do from you on this side, please let us know. Okay, now, back to work.
I will be introducing her to Mr. Colbert. As the chief said, she will also have some responsibilities within the police department, helping to get things done. But we want to make sure we coordinate with the city attorney's office.
Absolutely, very good, perfect. Thank you very much.
We have one more commissioner that's about to join us, and the chief, I'll let you introduce her outside. To the other commissioners, the second most important thing this evening is the selection of chairs, or at least the discussion of chairs. We have brought in some additional chairs. The one failure that we have yet to have is no one has a recollection that we've been able to find just yet of where we got these chairs from, since some of the commissioners seem to like the chairs we have at this room.
Okay.
But we're still researching, but...
So at the break, we can have that discussion?
Yeah.
Maybe sit in on it? I don't know if we can make that decision without Randy, but...
But he's only going to be sitting with me until January.
That's true.
In fact, he probably shouldn't do that.
He doesn't do that.
Yeah, I don't think he should get a vote, you know? Time to start marginalizing Randy.
So, you can let us know just one, two, or three. Just for information, chair number one is $537, chair number two $460, and chair number three is $540, $540.
You know what?
DJ's had him on sale for like $72.99.
That's ridiculous. You know what, Norton?
Okay, we'll talk about that at the break. Let's get on to the...
All right. Then, to the next item, the more important item is the board interviews, and I'm delighted to say the mayor has allowed staff to be excused, and so we will let the commission have the interviews. So with that, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome, thank you very much. All right, we're just going to go in the order that I've got them here, so... Posh Baker?
Here.
Oh, come on up. Sorry, I didn't see you back there, yeah. Just have a seat. Very informal, just give us a little bit of background on you, what you want to do, and we'll open it up for just kind of a quick discussion. So, first of all, thank you for coming in.
No problem, my pleasure, definitely, definitely. So, happy Monday, commissioners and mayor. This is for the Sanford Museum Board, and I'm currently the vice president of operations or programs for the Goldsboro Historical Association, which encompasses three museums, an art square, a garden, and later on this year, a theater. With that, my role has overlapped into making sure we develop relationships with the different museums within the city and the county, and one of them is with the Sanford Museum. As a local native, I remember visiting as a little girl and going to the museum in school. However, now that our relationship has evolved, we promote their events, we cross mingle different museum practices, and also learn ways to better promote the museums and arts and culture within the city.
Okay, great. We are always looking for good people for the museum and how we tie all that together, so that's wonderful news. Any questions for Ms. Baker? I think you're going to get off pretty easy.
She answered the one I had.
Which was what?
Well, I was going to ask her which of the three quarters.
Oh.
And I thought that was...
I just wanted to make sure you actually had a question. Well, that's wonderful. Thank you so much for stopping in and seeing us.
May I just ask, I know I was out there talking with the magistrate assistant. She probably answered it, as to why you really think that... What do you think you have to offer?
For the Sanford Museum Board, definitely just sharing our best practices in promoting cultural tourism within the city, and leveraging both of the museums is like, you know, when we go to museums and think of museums and think of arts and culture, you think of New York, or DC, or Paris with the Louvre and the Picasso museums, and we want to have as many cultural and art experiences as we can, and show that, you know, we have all these different pieces of the puzzles, and without one piece, that puzzle doesn't quite fit. So just making sure all the pieces come together and that they fit.
You seem really knowledgeable in this. Is this your background?
No, ma'am, I'm from finance.
Finance.
No, ma'am, but I've learned it.
Art and culture is just your love?
It has become, I delve deeper into it with the museums and coming aboard there and helping out even more, and I've just gained a lot of knowledge, a lot of reading, a lot of conferences and all that kind of good stuff as well.
Okay, I think, do you have some connection with this larger museum in Tallahassee, the Raleigh Museum?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So, Ms. Altamis Barnes is one of the founders of, is the founder of, the Florida African-American Preservation Network, and we have a great working relationship where we are a member. So, we are on the app, so there are a lot of people that come to visit the Goldsboro Historical Association because of the app, and they find us on the app. But also, a lot of representation in the state of Florida, but as well as outside of the state. So, we held a conference last year that was with the Smithsonian Museum, and we have friends that are in the new Smithsonian African-American Museum as well.
You held that here?
Yes, ma'am.
Here?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Arthur Mooney.
Yes, ma'am.
You know Alicia Clark?
Of course, I know Ms. Alicia.
She's done a great job.
Yeah, yes, yes, she has.
And if I might interject, Ms. Baker told me that she's been sitting in on occasion for another member of the board, but they can't be present, so you may want to mention that.
Yes, ma'am, I have been to all the meetings for the past year and events, and we also promote their events in our museum as well and on our social media pages.
Great.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you so much. Any other questions for Baker? Okay, thank you very much. We'll let you know, I think, what, middle of July?
I'm taking a vote tonight.
Oh, it's on for tonight?
It's on for tonight, for an appointment. We have tonight's appointments as a member to the HPB, planning and zoning, two positions possibly, and one for the museum.
Okay.
The next museum meeting is July 5.
Or the day after. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Fasha.
You're welcome. Have a good one.
Love your dress.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Ms. Parker, Linda?
She's here.
She is flying in. She's flying in?
She's, no, she's an overseas stewardess.
Yeah. She was in China.
Can you get her on the horn?
She interviewed last time.
Yeah, she interviewed last time.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Come on up, same thing. Just be just a second, you can go ahead and get started.
Okay. I am applying for the Historic Preservation Board, and yes, so I'm a Sanfordite, born and raised, graduated from Seminole High School and University of Central Florida, also graduated from the 2014 Citizens Academy class, and by day, I'm the business manager and service advisor for my family business, Harlan Beverly Transmissions. We've been here in Sanford since 1959. By night, I'm actively involved in the local community, serving as president of the Sanford Historic Trust and the Film Festival Director for the Love Your Shorts Film Festival. Why I want to serve on the Historic Preservation Board can be summed up in two words, historic charm. Sanford's historic charm is something that I've always enjoyed, admired, it's, in my opinion, one of our city's main assets. And this historic charm that we all know and love today didn't happen overnight. It's taken nearly 30 years of hard work and dedication by many passionate Sanfordites, and I want to continue that tradition by serving on the Historic Preservation Board. When it comes to historic preservation, I'm not very good with my hands, but I am very good with my mind. I'm a creative thinker guided by common sense who strives to engage in civil discussions, so that's what I would hope to bring to the Historic Preservation Board.
So that's why you're managing the business, not working on our transmissions?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
So, I appreciate the opportunity to be considered.
Nelson, you've certainly got a record. I mean, you've done a wonderful job with the HPB.
The Sanford Historic Trust.
The Historic Trust, wonderful job.
Yeah.
You have really been active and involved, and you've done a really good job with that.
Well, I love getting involved in the community, and I view that as a great stepping stone to serving on the Historic Preservation Board. Got a lot of great contacts here at the city that I've developed, as well as in the community, so I look forward to continuing that if possible.
How do you see the, did you, I might have missed it, are you stepping away from the trust then, or?
No, I'm still president through the end of this year, and then I can't serve anymore, so...
Okay, so...
Is it two-year term?
Two-year term, yeah. Well, it's two one-year terms.
I've got a question, I gotta figure out how to ask.
Take your time.
Well, last time I was here, Patty asked how old I was.
Well, I was about to do that to joke, but I figured somebody would get mad at me.
Yeah, this is going to be...
What, are there any changes in how the HPB is operating and making decisions that you think we need to look at?
Right, well...
Is that vague enough?
Yeah, very vague.
Okay.
So, I'll respond as best I can. Well, the preservation codes, S.Codes by their technical term, I know that there's differences of opinions on them and how they're interpreted and applied. I think a lot of that stems from miscommunication and not knowing the S.Codes, the preservation codes, fully. There's a lot of people in the community that think the trust is the HPB, and they think the historical society down at the museum is the trust.
Yeah.
There's just a lot of misunderstanding of how things work. The S.Codes, or preservation codes, were created by world-renowned urban planners some 30 years ago, so I respect the codes because of that. They saw Sanford's, you know, the future of our historic charm long before many others did. But that's not to say that historic preservation is static. As each year clicks by and as technology advances, the spirit of preservation needs to be reconciled with the execution of preservation. So, I don't know exactly how the S.Codes would need to be changed, or how the dynamics of the board would need to be changed, until I was able to get in and experience it for myself, but there's certainly a balancing act that needs to be had as each year clicks by. Hopefully, that was...
That was good, I answered one of the questions.
Okay, good.
And Nelson, you know, I can't speak for the other commissioners, I personally would like to see the HPB become a little bit more user-friendly.
Mm-hmm.
What do you, where do you put the importance of, yeah, I don't want to say how you treat applicants, but I'm going to say, you know, how applicants are treated and dealt with and...
I think I know where you're going with that. I've heard stories and about incidents at HPB, and I've talked to people directly. Some of the interactions have been a little less civil than I would like to see, and so that's where I strive to, you know, engage in as civil as possible manner, and as long as, you know, I study ahead of time, and I know all the questions and hopefully all the answers, you know, engaging with people shouldn't be that difficult. But again, I go back to miscommunication, lack of understanding, that can be the root of a lot of friction and drama that can come out of it.
Do you think they need more board training?
It's hard for me to say, because I've never served in any capacity like that for, on the city board.
Yeah, true, I understand, I understand.
But I'll report back to you in about six months, if you want.
Okay. The, you know, the performance of those boards and how the city feels after their experience, it just reflects on the entire city.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And like I said, I've heard, you know, stories and whatnot from second-hand discussions, and so I would hope to help lift that instead of, you know, bring it down, as far as the level of civility.
I've never seen you be anything but civil.
Okay. Don't watch me play video games.
Christina might say otherwise, but...
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Beverly? Thank you very much for coming in, greatly appreciate your time.
And I'll see you tonight for another item that the trust has before you, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Nelson.
Bring us to Shane Bowdy. Hey, Shane, how are you?
Good, how are you all?
Good, good, good.
Well, I don't know how I'm going to go behind that, but I am also applying for the Historic Preservation Board. My wife and I moved into Sanford just a few months ago, not for lack of trying. We've been trying to buy property in Sanford probably 15 years, and, you know, different aspects of that, and different homes we've looked at. And I'm an attorney in Winter Park, also a contractor. Got my contractor's license back in the 80s, and remodeled many homes, did a lot of historic preservation, not a lot in this city, but elsewhere and out even toward Geneva, old farmhouses and things that we restored, so really have a love for the restoration aspect of it. And as was just previously stated, really maintaining the historic charm of the city, it's what draws people here. You know, you can have the main city up there by I-4, but you've got this as the core, which really, I think, is amazing. And like I said, we've been trying to get in here for years and years, and this, I heard that this position was available, and my wife kind of was like, oh, we need to do that, we need to start getting in the community and doing things for the community now that we're here, and that's why I'm here.
That's great.
So, what I can do, you know, and what I can bring to the table as both an attorney, obviously, that's sort of a secondary thing for the board, but, you know, maybe just a different aspect on the way things are looked at. And as a contractor, you know, I really kind of feel for some of the homeowners that do bring things in front of the board. I had an excellent experience with the board and the few things that we needed to do with the house that we just purchased not too long ago, so I can't have anything bad to say about it. I can have everything great to say about that experience and my personal experience, and would like to certainly maintain that positive outlook, because people do have, in fact, when we were buying in here, friends of mine was like, oh, you got to deal with that board, oh, you got to deal with the board, and I'm like, yeah, but, you know, what's the big deal? We want to keep things the same, we want them, you know, to be that historic charm and character, and I think that people moving into this area really understand that, and there's a little education for that, and that, you know, we'll keep that positive outlook. That's me.
Great. What, so, do you do construction law, too?
Yeah, I do. Most of my clients are contractors. I do a lot of continuing education for contractors, develop programs for the state, so I do their CE classes, also teach the contractors licensing, for the exam licensing, so I do that as well. So, I keep pretty busy with the teaching as a side thing from the attorney, but most of my clients, I'd say a majority of my clients are contractors or subcontractors.
Got you.
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, first of all, welcome to Sanford.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
It's a great place. I'm glad you've had good experience with the board, so that's always good to hear, and I'll open it up for any questions.
Quite frankly, I can't come up with one.
All right, well, don't hold the lawyer thing against me.
Absolutely not, no, 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 no.
Only do you have enough experience with the board to answer the question I was asking, Nelson?
Probably not.
In terms of how things change, but you did comment about your experience.
Yeah, the process, you know, we didn't have to go through the whole process, because what we were doing was approved through the staff, we didn't have to go through the whole, you know, I guess, process that you have to go through to go in front of the board and pitch your idea and all that stuff. We didn't have to do that, so that was probably a good thing. And again, my experience on that front level was great with everybody we interacted with, so... But I do know it can be frustrating.
Have you had to work through preservation code in any of your other projects?
Yeah, in some of the other places we've done, we have to do that, and like I said, I know it can be certainly challenging, and I actually have some clients that always want me to try to represent them either in front of a planning and zoning board, or in front of, you know, Orange County Board, or whatever, and I don't do that very often, in fact, I shy away from that administrative-type work, but I know it's frustrating for them, and so what I do is just counsel them on, you know, making sure they're prepared, and let them do it, because I think going in with an attorney kind of gets a little negative connotation a lot of times to the boards, they kind of get their hair up, you know, so at least that's my experience.
Maybe you're right, yeah.
Yeah. It just, I think people get a little defensive of it, you know, go in there first, if they shoot you down and tell you all kinds of things, then come back and maybe bring back an attorney, but first thing, I think it's better that they do it themselves.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah, really appreciate your time.
Y'all have a great day.
You do the same.
Looks like we just got rain, huh?
I think you might, right, being in between them.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll bring us to Mr. Kramer. Mr. Kramer, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good, good, thank you. Same rules apply, just open, give us a little background, what you want to do, why, and we'll ask some questions.
All right, we moved here five years ago from Nashville, Tennessee, and one of the reasons it brought us here is the historic district, being one of the largest contiguous historic districts in Florida. And we purchased a home over on 115 West Ninth Street, which was without a kitchen, without a bath, without much of anything but a shell, so we rented a duplex down the street and worked every day for a year to get it where it was habitable and where we could move in. And we put a big addition on the backs, we had the opportunity to work with the board, with the city, with the building people, so it was all a positive experience, they didn't ask us to do anything that we weren't going to do or didn't want to do.
We normally don't get to see the people that actually have positive experiences. We always hear from the ones that, so it's good to hear.
I think the biggest, one of the biggest problems are your contractors. They don't want to comply with anything. They want to do it their way, and that seems to be the only way.
Wait, they want to build the biggest building for the cheapest amount on the...
Yeah, that's...
Good hand and hands.
But here, the guy that I had hired, which I worked with him every day, after the first meeting with the first inspection, I told him, from there on, I'll do all the meeting with inspectors and handle it from there, but, because he would continually tell me, well, you shouldn't have to do this, I don't care what we should do or shouldn't do, whatever they say to do is what we're going to do. So, that was my experience with the board and the city as far as that goes. My wife grew up in Orlando, and so when I retired in Nashville, we decided to move down this way, and here again, that's why we chose Sanford for the historic part of it. I was in the real estate business for 38 years, which included some, a couple of building companies I was involved in, from a financial standpoint, not actually out building the houses or developments. After I retired from the real estate business, I decided I needed something to do, so I got a license to do home inspections. I did that for a few years, and I decided I wanted to move to Florida, get out of the cold weather, and come down here. As far as the board goes, I don't know a whole lot about it, I've been to several meetings, there is a lot of miscommunication that needs to be addressed, as Nelson spoke of. I feel like there needs to be a strong bond between the city and the board to coordinate, so we don't have communication gaps, as I've seen, what little I've seen, there has been some, which I would strive to help bridge that gap. I have the time to devote to the board, I have an interest in the historic preservation here in Sanford.
You said you've been here five years at Ninth Street?
Yes. And we're still not finished.
Never will be.
Yeah.
Exactly. Well, good. Okay, any questions for Mr. Kramer? She's offhand.
No, but I can tell you right now, we've got another one of those situations where we've got more than one great applicant.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
I'll just ask a question. You made reference to the fact that, based on your observations, you learned that there's limited, a lack of communication between the board and the city, when you're saying between the board and commissioners, the board and administration, or both?
Mainly the building administration.
Okay.
Because oftentimes, obviously, the board has certain standards, and obviously, then the city has certain standards, you have to apply for building permits and things like that, so there seems to be, from what little I've seen, a gap there that needs to be bridged a little bit better to coordinate that.
It's that same thing we keep hearing, they hear one thing in the planning department and another thing from the board, and it's caused some big problems, and that is big, huge, like Cindy's Dance Studio, huge. It's that same thing we keep hearing. They hear one thing in the planning department and another thing from the board, and it's caused some big problems. It happens to be big, huge, like Cindy's Dance Studio, huge.
Right, exactly. That's one of the things I was thinking about there. Communication, as you all know, is always a big, big problem. And the better you, better communication you have, the better things you want to be.
And so, have you, I know you've been before them for your own restoration. Have you attended a few of their meetings just to sort of see how they operate and-
Yes, yes. And the S-codes are pretty stringent, but I think if people are fair-minded and study the proposals that come before them, that it can be worked out to satisfaction of all people. I mean, the S-codes are what they are.
All right. All right. Thank you very much for coming in, Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, you're both welcome. I appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, very nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Chris Glenn. Chris? Bob Nancy. How are you, Nancy?
Good.
Grooves?
How are you?
Good. Doing all right?
Good. Thanks for seeing me again.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming in.
No problem. My pleasure. I wanted to come in again because I wanted to kind of emphasize that it was important to me to contribute to the city, so that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
For P&amp;Z board. And I don't know, I guess a little background. I mean, I've been in Sanford since 2004. I'm a business owner here on the corner of First and Oak. I have Red Cottage Realty. I'm a real estate broker. I have a lot of experience with reading plans and navigating through all that as I ran an architectural firm. I had 10,000 house plans, which some of you may or may not remember, way back in the day.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Up on 434 and 436, up in that area. It was a showroom where you could come in and buy stock plans off the rack and build a dream home that actually most people never built, but, you know. We did a lot of plans for actual custom builders that did build, like Lake Forest and Heathrow and other areas. So, a recent graduate of Citizens Academy, and I just would like to serve. That's why I'm here.
Wonderful.
Do you, you don't think there would ever come a time where you would have to step aside on a vote from your realty side of it, is there?
I don't think so, but I certainly would if I felt there was a conflict, of course.
Okay. Any questions for Nancy? We've talked to you several times, so.
Yeah, I didn't want to just rehash everything I said before.
Sure.
Are you familiar with the architectural standards we just added to our code for commercial property?
For a commercial property? No. I'm not. When did you just-
Because that was going to be my question of, we're now looking at architectural standards for residential property.
Oh, okay.
And that would be something that P&amp;Z is going to be looking at.
Yeah, I have not seen your commercial code, no.
All right.
We certainly had to navigate all that residential code in the past, so.
We're doing a lot of updates on that, so that would be, that would be good. Been in there and seen it. Perfect. All right.
Thanks, Nancy. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Lundey. Ken Lundey?
How about Lundey here?
That's a good one. Oh, good name. All right, bud. You were stuck to the backside of Nancy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Courtney Lundey. Born and raised in Sanford. Graduate of Central High School, and I'm a recent graduate of the University of Central Florida. I just want to be a part of something that's going to keep Sanford, Sanford. I just love when I ride my bike, just riding through the cobblestone, the stone streaks, and just seeing the beauty, the tree lines, the tree lines, just everything that has to do with keeping Sanford the way it's been for a while.
Can I ask you a question? Because this, this, I think, would definitely play into a board appointment. Aren't you running for county?
No.
Okay.
I didn't raise the fee. I did four months.
Decided to-
No, the four months to raise the fee, and I didn't have to feed the full fee by that last-
It's a lot of darn money, yeah.
Yeah. I could have, if I had myself, gave myself more time, I probably would have been able to do it, so.
Yeah. So, of all these boards, which are you the most interested in?
This one, just to keep, you know, I know all of the changes. The historic preservation board, that's what I meant to say, that's the one I was here for. I know just in order to keep Sanford the way it is, you have to be on the type of board that's going to make the decisions to keep it the way and to keep the charm of Sanford. The mass appeal for ones who don't know about it, so.
Have you been to any of their meetings?
No, ma'am.
Have you had any experience doing any, any restoration of contracting, building?
No, ma'am. I just, to be honest with you, being involved with the history of Sanford all started with working with the museum in Sanford, with Posh and Ms. Francis.
Right.
And then also trying to, you know, with the history of Sanford, me working in the cemetery, restoring a cemetery. And so, I know when you keep with the history, you learn history. You bring work around for it.
That's a neat project y'all have going with that cemetery.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Lundey?
I don't think so, for me. I really appreciate your interest in all you do. I know you have been involved in a lot of behind-the-scenes.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're going to keep the initiative going, right?
Yes, sir. I have some other things that's planned within the next two, three months that I'll be putting out. I'm just trying to finalize the plans.
Okay, cool. Well, let us know what comes about of it. And I really appreciate you coming in again. Good to see you. Probably the best, probably the best chicken I've ever had in my life. Weeks ago.
You shouldn't talk with your mouth-
Yeah.
Oh, my God. I couldn't help it. I mean, I was like, it could be-
That good, huh?
It was a caribean mango with the Thai bake seasoning.
Oh, yum.
Yeah, and it just absolutely fell off the bone. I told him he was missing his calling by now. Cooking that every day.
Well, that's what I did in the Army, so I-
Yeah.
Oh, did you? Oh.
It was good.
But you didn't learn that recipe in the Army. Did they eat that good?
Just try, when I cooked, they learned. Did you cook that? Yes, I cooked that.
Yeah, exactly. Well, you got to ask them first, and say, "Did you cook that?" "I don't know. Was it good?" I cooked it now.
That's sweet.
All right, thank you, boss. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lundey. Nice to finally get to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Uh, Mr. Lundey, I think he's here. Donna Peterson? Donna?
Did we interview her before?
Ken?
Yes, you interviewed him at P&amp;Z, the last time you interviewed for P&amp;Z.
Mr. Lundey?
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah. Donna Peterson's not here?
Didn't hear it circled. That's out on-
Pin what?
Didn't hear it circled. That's out, sorry, yeah, that's on-
Tuscany?
Tuscany.
Tuscany.
Yeah. Course, that whole group was pretty good, so.
I'll try to find my notes from this time.
Where is Karina's?
Donna?
That's also out.
Earl Powell?
So, we have another one there. It's on the other side.
Dan Pang?
Yeah, that side. William Robinson, we interviewed him. And then Michael Schoenberg?
That's me.
Oh, come on up. You're the last contestant.
Oh, wow. Lucky me.
Yeah. How are you, sir?
Pretty good.
Good, good, good.
Well, let me tell you about myself. My name's Michael Schoenberg. I work at the Public Defender's Office here in, here in Southern County. I live right near downtown Sanford. Me and my wife moved here about two years ago. Living in a historic property, historic trust property. We really enjoy it. We love Sanford. And I'm hoping I can give back to it. One of the things I, one of the things that kind of drove me to apply, honestly, is that, you know, I've been here since 2014, and in the two years I've been here, I've seen progress between downtown and the residential areas, especially the downtown area. I mean, at least based on the value of our houses. I mean, my tax base is one of them. And that's a good thing. And that's why I want to be part of the Historic Preservation Board, because honestly, more tax base, the better it is for the community. And part of the reason why that the base is, is the historic nature of the houses. It attracted me, it attracted my wife, and it's attracting younger families, for example. Me and my wife are having a kid, about a month or so.
Oh, awesome. Congratulations.
It's fantastic, and we're great. But I think that's important for the, for the community. And the historic nature of the homes and the businesses to a certain extent are the reason for, one of the reasons for that. So, that's why I'm applying.
And you've been at the Public Defender's Office since when? Since when?
About two years. I started my career at Public Defender's in Orange. And then I did about two years doing insurance defense litigation after that. So, another lawyer. Lucky you guys.
You know Mr. Doughty?
I do know Mr. Doughty. He's my boss.
Yeah, oh, he is?
Yes.
You tell him that I said hello.
I will do that. Hello.
Tell him he never calls anymore.
Yeah, Mr. Doughty. I haven't seen him either since, yeah.
That's a good guy, so.
Yeah.
Okay. You got any question?
Well, have you had to do any projects that had to go through HPP?
I have not. When I, I bought the, my house from the Danes, to give you guys, it's a yellow house on the corner of Magnolia and Seven, between Seven and Eight. So, I did not have to do anything with the board. I was, I did go to a couple of the meetings where there was an approval on some of the improvements from the apartment property across the street from us. And I was in support of, ultimately, after hearing Brady, I think is his name, who spearheaded that. So, and it seemed to be pretty good. But I think the thing with the S-codes, if I can just jump into that-
Please.
Look, I'm not going to sit here and tell you I'm super familiar with all of the S-codes, because I'm not. But the truth being is that I think that you want to keep historic nature, historic feel. But you can't let, can't let it, I guess, stop progress in building. As long as it matches the spirit of the code, if you follow the letter T, you know, letter of the law, to it, it can, I guess, inhibit progress. And that's, I think, something that the board should avoid in the future, and the city should avoid. I mean, we've had, we're having all types of improvements down by the riverfront, residential, they're building a house right next to me. So, obviously, something's going right. I want to keep that going.
Appreciate that. All right, any other questions for Michael? Thank you very much for coming in. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate your thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the baby.
Thank you so much.
Do we know what it's gonna, what the gender is?
He's a boy.
Oh, awesome.
He's a boy.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Nothing better.
Take it easy, everybody.
Take care. Send Dano in here too, will you? Dano? Hey, don't mind us. Just whenever you're ready, have a seat.
I need to go get a drink and hang out a little bit.
Hey, Cynthia, do you have a pen or pencil I could borrow? I can't find mine in my purse. Oh, Art's got one. Thank you, Art.
Just tell us a little bit about-
That's the City of Sanford, I know.
It is. Background, spend a few moments, same thing, you know the drill.
Yeah, I think I've seen it a time or two.
A couple of times.
I don't know if I have to say for the record, but Dan Pang, been in Sanford for about 17 years. I just really thought, I've been thinking about this for a couple of years. I want to get more involved other than just what I do in terms of writing. And so, thought it was time to step up and get on one of the city boards. I put down for several, I think the one, the one that I would not want to be a part of, at least right now, is the P&amp;Z board, because I'm doing some freelance writing for the Orlando Sentinel Growth Spotter. So, I'm writing a lot of things that may come up on that agenda, so I'd, other than the P&amp;Z.
Dan, this only has you as HPP, so was it-
I've got HPP, CRA, Airport Authority.
I've got a whole bunch. Museum, Airport Authority, everything.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Who wants to go on the House Authority?
My bad.
House and Authority, yeah, so.
Where did you, oh, there you go. Okay.
Did you not read your packet?
I, for some reason, I was looking.
He's a little detained.
Sorry.
It's good we can laugh about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can, but can't he?
I mean, which, which one are, I mean, what's your, which one are you thinking, Dan?
I don't have a huge preference. I like the airport, the CRA, the HPP. I think I bring something different to HPP. Just as many meetings as I've sat in on and watched people interact with all kinds of different boards. You know, I think I could bring some stability and maybe some common sense approach. Not saying that we need to do away with the S-codes or anything like that, you know. I mean, we've got it here to the S-codes, but a lot of times, those issues that are coming before any boards, whether it's the HPP or City Commission, or sometimes you're having to, the code doesn't specifically address the issue that the homeowner or the applicant has in front of you. So, I think it's important to maybe bring a little common sense. And there's, there's no hack against HPP necessarily, because I see it with P&amp;Z. I see it sometimes with commission and, and other things. And sometimes, quite frankly, it is, I think Nelson and Mr. Kramer, I think it was, mentioned, sometimes it's just people don't want to do the right thing. They want to argue about something. So, I get that too. I understand that as well.
Okay.
Do you need to know my background or? Born and raised in Tennessee. Went to school at the University of Alabama.
Strike two?
Was a probation officer.
And you can still put your pants on in the morning? I mean, that's pretty-
Not, not very well. Is that a crack about my disability?
Oh, here we go. Put it on 327. I don't like you either. Okay. Any questions for Dan?
I think-
I think everybody kind of knows you, so.
Yeah. I don't know if that's a good time or a bad time.
I might work out well for you. All right, bud, thank you. That's all the interviews we have. We've got about 12 minutes. You guys want to look at, I guess we need a place tonight. We've got HPP, position three. You said two, a position and an alternate for P&amp;Z?
Well, you have, under Planning and Zoning Commission, the gentleman that you appointed as the alternate has been serving, has had to step up to, to fill in for a seat that was vacant. So, he's been a voting member at least at one meeting. I understand that he's doing a great job there, so I-
And that's-
That is Mr. Fiorentino.
Yeah.
He was appointed as the, as the alternate, and as history has been, you all have moved up the alternate to the-
So, we need to, we need to make that official to move him in?
Yes, that would, yes.
So, we're just appointing an alternate tonight?
Well, in my suggested motion was to appoint Dominic Fiorentino or whomever to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill position five, an unexpired term due to the resignation.
Oh, I see where that, no.
Yeah, and then-
I gotta be honest with you, I never look at suggestion.
You don't? Okay. All right. And, and that's why the vote, the alternate and the regular member position were placed there, to give you the opportunity to, to appoint Mr. Fiorentino or someone else.
Dominic, Mr. Fiorentino was the alternate?
He's currently serving as the alternate, yeah.
And then we'll be, so we need, if, if we, in fact, choose to make Mr. Fiorentino a permanent member, then we need to choose one alternate.
Correct.
Got it.
Why would they do that? And then Nancy?
Nancy.
That's the alternate.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking too.
I think Posh would be good on the P&amp;Z board.
Yeah, I do too.
So, and one question that needs to really be reviewed is the HPP. E, F, G. Don't forget to take that to item G in the back of your book if you'd like.
So, are we going to discuss HPP, or are we going to discuss it down there?
Whatever you want to do. I mean, we've got-
Might as well discuss it here.
Yeah.
Discuss it here?
Discuss it here.
Well, I personally think that we had some, yeah, the good applicants.
Yes, that's the thing.
I really, you know, I think if, if we think about kind of spreading things around within the community, I think Mr. Beverly is an awesome, awesome applicant. However, he is president of the Historic Trust. My concern is, even though it's not truly a conflict, could it sort of almost be a perceived conflict? And I think, I think, I think Nelson is awesome, and I think he'll make a great HPP member when he's not president of the Historic Trust. I really would like to see some new blood, and I was very impressed with everybody, but I have a particular leaning towards Mr. Doughty. Attorney and contractor, considerable knowledge of legal and construction aspects, et cetera, et cetera. I, I thought he had a great interview, like what he had to say, like the way he answered the questions. And it seems very level-headed and calm.
And I think he actually lives in one of my ancestor's houses.
Really?
Do you intend to remove yourself?
No.
No, it's an ancestor. Yeah, um, I like-
The one thing that, that I did not like about that is he said, "I want to keep things the same." He, uh, yeah, it was-
What do you mean?
I was told what to do, and that's exactly what I did. And, I mean, I wrote, "Wants to keep things the same," so that was straight out of his lips regarding the S-codes.
I think that's better than a couple of them that made comments about bending the things to suit the situation. I, I would rather see the S-code changed than reinterpret it.
Me too. I would truly rather see the S-code changed than reinterpret it.
I think there's a whole lot of interpretation, or needs to be some interpretation of it.
Yeah, I'd rather see the actual codes changed than, than for it to be, oh, in other words, this last gentleman said, "We need to stick with the spirit rather than the actual code." I, I just- I, I just don't see how you can do that, because everybody's gonna interpret the spirit differently.
Different people are gonna get different, um-
Yeah, I'd rather change the codes if we need to make them a little less rigid, less, less rigid, less constructive. I'd rather see the, the code, the change happen in the code rather than those sitting on the board interpreting it, because I think that's gonna create even more problems between the city and, between, you know, the P and Z, the board, the applicant. I think, I really do. I want for changing the codes. I think they are too restrictive in some areas. But I don't like the idea of, well, it's the spirit, not the letter of the law. I was surprised that came out of an attorney.
I disagree. Because of the, the spirit versus the, I mean, there's a piece of ethos on there, and look at the fiasco we went through, and we actually had to come up with a determination where we're going through the spirit of the determination of the law versus the actually the hardcore application.
And that's what happens every single time if-
That's where the code needs to change.
Yeah. That's where the, I think the change should happen in the code. And I'm, believe me, I'm fine with that. You know, I think a lot of it is, is very restrictive and very prohibitive. But I don't think, I, I think that should take place within the codes themselves. You okay?
Yeah. Okay. Well, you guys get to make the motions, so.
What did you think about Kramer?
Okay, enough. Gee.
He got removed here five years ago. Look over for him, so.
Oh, yeah, liked him a lot. Um, yeah, Kramer with a C, Mr. Kramer. Uh, he would be my second choice. Where is he?
He's right after, um, Bowdy.
Yep. Thirty-eight-year real estate broker, yes. He, um, he also seemed to have a-
I'm not sure, you know, Bowdy living here for a few months is a good thing or a bad thing?
Yeah, I'm not either. You're right.
There's a lot of personalities that you need to know about in there.
I thought he said three years, guys.
No, he said he, I have that he lived here a few months.
Oh, I had three years.
Kramer?
No, Bowdy.
No, Bowdy.
Oh, Bowdy, yeah. Kramer, five.
I thought Bowdy said three years. I'm sorry. If I misunderstood that, then you're absolutely right. Everybody can, I mean- Mr. Kramer's been here five years.
Does- Do we have board, H P B board members that do not live in the historic district? Do you know?
Uh, don't have the board compilation with me today.
Annie Apple lives on Mullenville, showing her house as a local landmark.
Okay, so she's under the S code. Is there anybody else that's-
Oh, actually, you did have Tammy Anini lived outside of the district in a historic house that wasn't landmark, but she recently moved to the district. But she did serve on the board for over a year, living outside the district.
Is, is Mr. Kramer's house in the district at Ninth Street?
Yeah. But Nelson's is not. It's Seventeenth Street.
He's actually not that far away from Tammy. Where she was before.
All right. You guys good? Take a short break. Brief to be in five.
Kind of there. Leaving at five.
We're leaving in about five.
Five minutes. I thought he said leaving at five, too.
Okay, Mr. Bronapark, consideration of vote request for payments impact fees up to one hundred and eighty days. Send the counter, pardon.
Right, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, we received a request to have a delay of deferred payments. I shared it with the city attorney, and the city attorney indicated that it was permissible by the city statutes to delay for a hundred and eighty days. We have John and I, Statuolo, I think.
Di Giovanni.
That's what I forgot. Who's, who's here to, to speak on it. So, um, the city attorney can just share what the statute permit, and then Mr. Giovanni could, um, share with you his request.
Yeah, the city code has, uh, has provisions to defer payment of impact fees for a hundred and eighty days or until a certificate of occupancy or a final electrical inspection, whichever occurs first. If the commission chose to approve this tonight at the meeting, then we would prepare a, an agreement for the developer to sign. The agreement would run with the land, so that if the property was sold during the hundred and eighty days, the prospective purchaser would, would know that there were still funds owed to the city. The, uh, the, uh, impact fees would bear interest at the legal rate, which is right now, I think, four point seven eight percent per annum. If they're not paid right now but paid, then it'll draw interest from the date of the, uh, pulling the permit until the satisfaction of it.
So, they start now? Are interests accrued?
The interest will begin to accrue as soon as they pull a permit.
And there, there's no C O for operation?
No.
So, we get paid?
No.
Okay.
It's discretionary with the commission. You have the power to do it, you're not required to do it. Developer's asking for it, and it's up to the commission.
Okay.
John, you wanna-
Sure.
Can sit up here if you wish.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
How are you this evening?
Good, good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, as Mr. Bronapark said, my name is John Di Giovanni. I was before you roughly a year ago or so with the zoning change for the property, which is adjacent to the H H Greg. We also own the H H Greg. Our, uh, my purpose here today is to ask for the deferment, as, as been stated, of the, uh, impact fees related to, uh, pulling the vertical permit. We have already started site. We have our L D P. Uh, that has commenced. Uh, from our budgetary standpoint, um, the large number associated with the permit fees and the impact fees were outside of our budget parameters. However, we have accommodation to make that up over a period of time during our normal draw process with the lender. So, what we're asking for is a deferment of some portion of the, uh, of the permit fee, so that we can work it into our draw schedule, and that way it wouldn't present a economic hardship to the project.
What, what was your thought it was gonna be and, and what it was?
Well, we had a number in the five hundred and sixty thousand dollar range, and, uh, we initially got, um, uh, fees of one point three million, but after, uh, we had already sent in a, uh, alternative impact study to the Seminole County School Board, which they have accepted, so the fees have dropped down to nine ninety. Uh, we had, we're also the developer for the losses of Anna Park on Lake Mary on, um, International Boulevard. And, um, when we pulled those permits at Seminole County, uh, the same situation occurred, except we, we didn't have to come before, uh, the group or the commission to get the deferment. Uh, they simply deferred a portion of those fees until final electrical, which is how your, your code reads. Um, and it was done at, at the time we picked up the permit. So, we simply just deferred it. Then when we got our final electrical, we paid the remaining balance of the, uh, of the permit fees.
Okay.
What are your total impact fees out there?
Uh, nine ninety.
Nine hundred and ninety thousand?
Thousand, yeah, including, including the, uh, school board. Yeah. Well, they were one point three million, and then we, we did, uh, an alternative impact study for the school board.
Okay.
Portion of it. And, and we're unaware if there's any other alternative impact studies we can do for police or traffic or anything else. Uh, I don't think there is. So, we, um, so I think nine, nine hundred and ninety thousand is the number we're, we're at right now.
Man.
Okay.
But is-
That's what we said.
Is all that good information?
No, no, that's including school and county.
That, that's everything, as far as I'm, I know, right?
So, so what's the amount that we're looking at different?
Well, I was un, unsure of how much you could defer. I, I don't know if the city attorney has clarity on that, but we, we were hoping at least half.
The city has the power as far as impact fees, not other fees, but impact fees, to delay up to a hundred and eighty days, the entire amount of the city portion of the impact fee.
Do we know what the certain portion is?
I don't, I don't.
I, I, I can pull it up if, uh-
Yeah.
Give me a second.
Thought we were getting nine hundred and ninety thousand.
No.
Really?
No. No, that's in total, sorry.
I heard that number.
Well, from our standpoint, it's just a check we had to write.
Right, yeah.
It might take me a second to find them.
I mean, I-
I mean, I'm just asking for information. I'm, I'm okay with the first.
Well, the two questions, though, however, is how much of the amount was the city commission want to defer, being asked to defer, and for what period of time?
What's the estimated C O date?
That I don't know.
Obviously, next.
Uh, it'll be roughly twelve months from the date we start, uh, vertical construction. And we presume that'll start, um, somewhere mid-July.
But we can only defer them for a hundred and eighty days.
Eighty days, that's right.
A hundred and eighty is the maximum.
So, we won't even get to C O.
Right.
Yeah, okay. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with doing the half or whatever you guys want to do, whatever staff wants to do.
Well, so I'm wondering, how much of ours do we need to defer to get them down to the number they need to be?
So, I don't know what portion of this is city and what portion of this is county, the way it's laid out here. Police impact fee is sixty-five thousand. Um, impact fee commercial, one hundred and eighty-three thousand. There's, uh, impact fee, a second commercial impact fee of four hundred and twelve thousand. Um, so right there, it's, you know, it's five hundred, well over five hundred thousand. Fire, fire impact fee of thirty-six thousand. And then there's smaller fees as well. Seminole County Road impact fee is not, not the City of Sanford, so.
Okay, there's two commercial. Those aren't ours.
I think one of them is probably.
Uh, says W D impact commercial.
Can our planning department, building department get that for us between now and the work session? I mean, now in the meeting? Get them.
All you gotta do is ask.
I'm just looking to see if there's anybody to ask.
Well, I think, I can go get them and bring them back, or I can try to print these up here.
I think the question for the commission would be how much total?
Mm-hmm.
How much you're asking, and Russ is coming in, how much you're asking, um, to be deferred and for what period of time?
Okay. Well, we, we would like the whole a hundred and eighty days, and then if we could do, since there's county and city fees, I think it's probably, um, not knowing the exact number, but I think we'd like to defer all the city fees if we could, uh, for the hundred and eighty days, if that's possible.
Russ, do you know what the, the impact fees are for, is for the Seminole Commons Project up there?
No, sir.
If you could get that for us by the seven o'clock meeting.
Seven o'clock meeting, so you're asking for all, all, all us?
Well, I, I have a printout that, um, Deborah Blanchard?
Blanton.
Blanton sent, and, uh, I can, I can print this, send it to someone, have them print it up if you'd like, or just go get it.
Russ? Who's in a queue with you?
I can get with you after this.
Sure. I'm just not sure what portion of this is city and what portion of it is, um, county.
Okay. So, the question before the commission is if you're interested in it, and I'm hearing some sense in, in yes, and what I'm hearing, and this is to be clarified, whatever the amount is you're requesting that the city's full amount be deferred for a hundred and eighty days.
Correct.
So, that's basically the request for the commission.
I, I mean, I'm okay with a portion questioning my mind, the whole portion, but, or the whole thing for a hundred and eighty days. I mean, can we, would you be okay with him back and said fifty-fifty, or?
I, I think we'd be fine with that.
Okay. And that, that at least gets us, as long as we can't get, there's no opening until we're paid.
Right. Right, that's exa, and that's how it worked when we did, um, the losses of Savannah Park with Seminole County.
Okay.
It was, it was due at electrical final.
Okay.
And that was prior to C O.
So, if we did fifty on a hundred and eighty days out, no, or fifty percent, um, deferred till six months. If not, we collect interest on the fifty percent that's not collected until the payment.
That's correct.
And no opening until-
And it's, it's not an automatic hundred and eighty days. It's a hundred and eighty days or until the electrical C O is, uh, the electrical, final electrical permit is pulled. Or, uh, uh, a hundred and eighty days from the vertical permit, I believe. So, I don't know where this is going to fall, but that's the parameters of the ordinance.
Whichever's the earlier's?
Yes.
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm assuming the hundred and eighty days then will probably be the sooner off.
That's my assumption as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So, what, what I'm hearing is for the city attorney, assuming it's approved formally this evening, would then get with the developer to have the agreement written for those conditions as the attorney has just laid out.
Yeah.
All right, terrific. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming in.
And just for clarity, Russ, if you could go with him and then print out so that we have our exact numbers, what we're talking about.
Well, I can go do that while you-
Okay, well, you can email it to him, and he can then print it out.
Okay, all right, very good.
Perfect. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Um, how about, um, item B, Brownfield Assessment?
Hey, this is Mr. George, Tom Brownfield Assessments.
Thank you.
I have two items that will be deployed this evening. Now, this is a regular meeting item, and it is a resol, and both are after the fact. And neither one includes any, uh, any city expenditure, any city funds. This is, um, just to do a, a budget resolution or budget amendment to accept four hundred thousand dollars from the D P A for the Brownfield Assessment Grant that I've discussed with you before. Um, this is just accepting the monies to go into, um, the public work professional services line. This, this initiative started about three years ago. The commission did vote to, to, um, apply for the grant. We were awarded the grant. I've been in front of you with an agenda item to appoint, um, committee members, and also to talk about some of the work we would do in that Little Red Schoolhouse, um, uh, uh, Westside Community Center, not Community Center, but their Resource Center. And, um, this is just to accept the monies from, from the D P A. So, it's a, a budget amendment to accept four hundred thousand dollars from the D P A.
Okay. Great presentation.
It's always nice when there's no money.
Did you want to talk about the second one, so it's not on the work session?
I can't quickly. The other is just a consent item, and it's, again, it's after the fact. Um, the city and the county, uh, worked on a, um, interlocal agreement for the services of their C R A project manager to help the Sanford C R A, um, with their, um, uh, their, their meetings and everything else. Executive Director, Sonia Fonseca. And, uh, the C R A will cover all the costs for that, um, that work. It would be, um, up to twenty hours a week, up to twenty hours a week, um, at a, at a cost of forty dollars and forty-one cents, which basically is her salary and benefits. So, it's interlocal that will be paid for by the C R A with their funds for, um, services of their C R A project manager.
How is she doing?
She's, she's battling.
She's very sick.
She's been here to work, um, some, and, and she, she likes, uh, she thinks that's gonna help her work through it. She's gotta be productive, so she's been in several days working, and, um, she's doing what she can.
And so, we're not, we're not taking on her any benefits or anything? We're just straight paying Seminole County to pay her, so she's-
She, she remains a, a county employee. Thank you. And, and, um, we are, we're paying, basically, the, the hourly rate, um, and we only pay for the hour she works. If she doesn't work twenty, we pay for whatever she, she works. But the hourly rate, uh, covers her salary and, um, and, uh, that, the benefits, um, that the- But the hourly rate covers her salary and, and that, the benefits that the county provides her, but she's not a city employee by any means.
Okay. Any questions for Tom on that? This is a good thing for us, she's very well versed with CRA, how to do this, and disperse the funds and write the plans and so.
Again, this was a decision of the CRA board.
Yeah.
It has to go through the city, but they voted to.
Does this have a budgetary impact on us? What does the CRA pay?
For part of Bob Turk, yes.
Okay, and so what will that mean to us?
As we're going through the 2017 budget, we'll be presenting that to you. But yes.
She remains a county employee.
Well, she's a, she is a county employee, we're reimbursing the county, but in terms of all the liabilities, she is a county employee.
Any questions on that?
Those are the impact fees for the Seminole Commons, the ones in yellow are the non-city impact fees, those are county.
Gives us our total head count.
No, it doesn't.
But we can only do the impact fees, right?
Impact fees only.
Impact fees, not permanent fees.
That's correct. Impact fees only.
Okay, so 38 to 65. What is WB impact commercial?
38 plus 65.
I don't know.
WB, William Dixon?
Oh, is that water?
Yeah.
Okay, you tell us, okay. So 183 plus 65, 38.
286. So 290, so we'll collect 140 some upfront, and then 180 days, collect the other 143. Got it? Everybody good? Okay. Thank you. That'll bring us to classification play and pay plans for.
Fire. All right, we have the chief here. This is a request in terms of allowing some flexibility as we have done with utilities, so I'll bring in the fire chief and deputy fire chief.
Yeah, we're requesting a resolution to be passed tonight for the classifications in the fire department, the firefighter EMT positions and the firefighter paramedic positions. We've done similar actions like this in the past with other city positions, for example, the building inspectors, one, two, and three, we have that flexibility between the subsets of the classification, we also did it for wastewater, too, I think, so we're asking to do that now. We currently have 56 budgeted firefighter positions, EMT and paramedic, with one over higher position. We're requesting change that to 57, that'll give us 19 firefighter, EMT, paramedics per shift, times three would be 57. So it's always been funded over the years, last eight years that I remember, but there was no, no formal commission action taken over the years, and now we're doing that.
So this is really just formalizing what you've already been doing?
Yeah, for at least eight years, I think. I tried to research the former chief's files, and I couldn't find anything, must have been a verbal between him and the former city manager, and we funded it for eight years, and we're just requesting to have 57 full-time equivalents now.
Okay, any questions for chief on that? Okay, thanks, chief, thanks, guys. 81815 to amend the budget for 135 active shooter kits?
This is for the police department.
Indeed.
And I will ask the chief to describe for the commission what a shooter, active shooter kit is.
Mayor, commissioners, city manager, the purpose of our memo is to request the use of impact fees for the purchase of 135 active shooter kits. The active shooter kit is essentially purchasing higher level ballistic armament for the officer who are on the street, as well as Kevlar helmets. Beginning last year, we started training all of our officers on what's called SAVE Training, that is SWIFT, I had to write it down, SWIFT, Assisting Victim Extradition, Extraction Training. So I can get the word out, both police and fire throughout the entire county has been trained on this, this op, this way for us to go in and deal with active shooting cases. We had placed this on our budget essentially beginning last year. This year, it was part of our budget prior to the incidents that happened down in Orlando, we were asking to put it on as far as the, the budget for October 1st, but we were able to speak with Cynthia Lindsay and, and the city manager and said that we could utilize impact fees to make the purchase of these items.
Maybe we should get 75% from the developers. Except 50%.
To pay for more impact fees, yes, sir.
There are sufficient amount of impact fees currently in the police.
Yes, they are sufficient.
And as the chief indicator, this is on his list, when we were discussing the 2017 budget, we looked at it, and as a result of what happened in Orlando, we decided to do it sooner than later, and the monies were available, so it's before you now.
Can I carry one in my tray?
Yes.
I've already have.
I was gonna say, maybe perhaps you should get an additional one.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions for chief on that? So, and Norton, you're good with that, obviously?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, sir. That'll bring us to QTI award for Legionnaire, for Legionnaire.
As Mr. Turk sums up, I wanted to share with you that in today's Orlando Journal, Orlando Business Journal, there was an article says a major airline in central Florida is planning to build a flight simulator center that would create nearly a dozen high-wage jobs. Allegiant wants to build a 45,000 square foot full flight simulator near Sanford, Orlando International Airport. Notice I said Sanford, Orlando International Airport. The center will create 11 new jobs with an average annual wage of $100,000. As part of the expansion, Allegiant will make a capital investment of 2, I mean, of $24 million. Legion is requesting funding from Florida, the city of Sanford and Seminole County under Enterprise Florida Inc., Qualified Targeted Industries Award will, the program will provide $5,500 in funding. The city and the county will split the amount of the QTI local match according to Sanford documents. The Sanford City Commission will discuss it and vote on it on June 27, 300 North Park Avenue at 7:00 p.m.
Did you say $5,500?
Yeah, the total, the total amount would be 11,000, that's the 20% match to the state. We'll take on 5,500 of it over five years for those jobs.
Is it, was this a budgeted item?
Yes.
So it's included in the economic development's budget for incentives.
Incentives, yes.
Okay, any questions about the QTI or the funding of 5,500 for this? Okay.
Okay, I've also asked Mr. Turk to talk about the tax exemption, that the commission is also considering this evening, and we have a handout for that. It gives you specific dollars.
Our tax, you know, tax abatement ordinance, we agreed to give up 50% of, of the amount that's generated. We had the, the county's tax appraiser, property appraiser look at it, at everything, and he made his phone calls to the person in Allegiant and to the developer, so he'll get the exact cost of what this impact would have on the, on the number. As you can see there, per year, for the 10 years, the amount on the bottom of right of each one of those years, how much taxes would be generated at the current, current rates. So you'll see that after 10 years, it'd be about $730,000 that would be generated because it's new development. Of that, we would be accumulating about 361,000, which would be 50%, so they would get that overall after 10 years.
331,000.
Well, 50% of the 730.
Yeah, 361.
361.
And then come year 11, we get the full 730.
Yes.
I mean, the, the full amount.
Which is about 60,000, probably, 59, 60,000.
So tell me something on this, on this valuation in these columns, Bob, you, you see the, the columns that start, you know, over here on the left, what does this col, what does this mean percent good between life and value? Does anybody know what that is? Percent good?
That's why I hope Cindy would be here.
You know, James?
Sorry, I was looking, it says the question.
See the columns?
I'm guessing it has to do with depreciation.
Percent good, between life and value, what, what is percent good? Do, do, do you have any idea?
Well, I think if you're looking at the next column, as, as that decreases, you notice the numbers, for instance, if you notice, and this is, for instance, in year two, you see the Sanford full 100% is 104,000, yet in year three, it goes down to 93, in year four, 83, and by the year 10, it's only 59,000.
Okay, what?
Depreciation.
Yeah.
Got it, okay, so you think that's depreciation?
That's the percentage of the value that the county has the value of tax.
Okay.
From the initial value.
God, I mean, how complicated. Okay.
Okay, I think I missed, heard something that was said. So the maximum amount we can exempt is 50% of these numbers each year, right?
Right.
Right.
So by the end, we, it could be at 50% of 730,000. But they can work out whether they front load that, or if it's 50% per year, or, but over 10 years, they can do an average, total average of 50%.
That's what the commission said.
The total can't be above.
Right.
Okay. The number we've kept hearing was 24 million, right? 24.5 million.
That was their estimate.
This is a total of 16.7 million investment. Is the amount that we exempt based on this projection, or is it based on the actual value that year?
It's a great question. It should be based upon the assessed value, because that's what we're getting paid on.
Right, so, you know, let's say things go crazy and the assessed value in year 10 is 16 million instead of 8 million, we'd be exempting taxes based on that assessed value that year, right?
I'd have to, you can take that wording of the ordinance by itself.
Okay. So this is just the property's appraiser's projection as to what we would be exempting.
Yeah, we're not saying more than what we collect.
Right.
I mean, it's a great question, because I was gonna mull in that, had to mull that for a second, too.
Well, I'm sorry, I mean, this, they would be, they would still be paying property tax, but not, but the average of 50%, so we're still getting monies we weren't getting before.
Right. But it's 50% of the actual assessed value that year.
Yes.
Not what this paper said.
Correct, this is David Johnson's estimate, that's correct.
Right. So if the actual investment is 24.5 million rather than the 16.7, then, I mean, right upfront, it's a bigger number. We'll get more. We'll get more, but they'll save them. Okay.
Yeah, you're never gonna get an assessment that's the same as, as the actual investment.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that until I started looking.
Unfortunately.
Especially the same.
Okay, but, okay, good, that makes sense. All right, any questions on that?
On the QTI? Any more questions for the QTI?
I think we're good with QTA, QTI only at 5,500.
But again, all of these are incentives that are being offered to Allegiant here to go into their decision-making.
Yeah.
Right, and the county did, this is the first time the county's ever approved it before we did. Usually it's us, but they approved the contingent on us approving it, just like we usually do.
Okay.
Well, it drops dramatically with depreciation, doesn't it?
Okay.
Next item, also economic development, the city commission has in the past twice amended its policy towards the taking of a second for the CRA property loans. This is a third request, Mr. Turk.
This is the third one. Cristo's, is owned by Pie in the Sky Corporation, has come to us requesting that we do a loan subsidy change, or ordinance change again. They do, when they applied for theirs way back in 2010, it was the end of 2010, so we needed to now move that date again so they could qualify for our tax abatement, so we moved it 10 years, so nobody else should be coming before us to change that ordinance. That's what we're, we're thinking now. So we want to move it, the date in the ordinance, back to June of 2010.
I'm sure that'll cover everybody.
No, we're thinking it would.
I'm a little confused, so.
We moved it before for Buster's Bistro and for.
Right, so what, is Cristo's building doing a new, is this a new?
No, they're, they're looking for refinancing.
Oh.
Refinancing with another bank, Wells Fargo at this time, so they could get some extra cash to do another project that they're looking at, hopefully downtown. So they're just asking for the change of the bank, for must've go from first to second position on the lien.
Again.
And move the, and move the.
Do you know how much that is, Bob? How much is that lien? Can't, I mean, five years, five years in, six years in, right?
They, they've paid it off. I'm pretty sure, unless it's the $30,000 figure that Jennifer was talking about.
I believe it'd be more than 20 or 30,000.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let's put an investment back in, so, okay. Any questions on that?
No.
All right.
And you said you think it's gonna be in the city of Sanford?
Yes.
We would love to know if that refinance of their Sanford building's gonna schedule a reinvestment into the city of Sanford.
Probably another brewery.
Oh, jeez.
Okay, that's the end. RMG.
Yes, we have a proposal to move forward with a commission initiative, and that is the cottage homes budget, and it is requested that that money come from the Little Red Schoolhouse, Ms. Salt.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, this one should be pretty simple and straightforward. It was something that you all had already approved, but we had not yet done a budget amendment for, so this is just simply for the budget amendment.
Okay, any questions, Christine?
Yeah, how many plans do we expect to get out of this?
It was, it's actually, they're going to be master filed with the building department, so it will be multiple floor plans and probably five elevations is what we're gonna get out of them, but they will, it winds up coming out to 10, because the elevations will also be in the reverse with different finishes.
How much of that red schoolhouse money is left, and what all has it been spent on?
We'd have to get the numbers, it was about 300, about 300 some, and then 42 initially was with Hopper, and then I believe the other amount also came for Hopper, but I don't think we spent anything else on it other than that.
I think all of it, the only thing we spent is 310.
There's about 202,000 left, I think, was the last number I had, the last figure.
Do you think that with these plans, that there could be an ability to, for someone to do something with the Little Red Schoolhouse property? Is that what kind of a push that we would do?
Yeah, that's actually gonna be coming to you after we kind of work through the drawings. The next step in this, because it's. The next step in this, because it's going to be a cottage lot ordinance, and that is going to identify the potential lots throughout the entire city that could actually be, you know, part of this program. And one of the sites that we have looked at is the Little Red Schoolhouse site. And I'm on the Brownfields committee with Tom, and we've talked about that as potential to do the phase one on that site, and then also have it available for maybe partnering with a developer or something to do the first kind of model homes. So that way, we could get kind of publicity on the project, and, you know, it's a good location and all of that. So that's internally what, you know, we've been looking at. That will be coming back to you potentially, because we'd have to actually do surveys to get the lot splits done, because it was one lot. So we're looking at how many lots we could get out of that, and I'm thinking four is reasonable. There have been discussions about maybe squeezing five out, but then we'd be creating non-conforming lots, which I don't think the city wants to do.
Right, because our cottage ordinance was going to be, you can't create non-conforming lots to do this, right?
Right.
Unless you're us.
Okay.
You can have an existing non-conforming lot and take advantage of it, but the idea is not to create additional non-conforming lots.
Okay, so, but back to my original question, just to make sure I heard the right thing. A total of 10 plans.
Yes.
Which includes different, a combination of different floor plans and elevation?
Right. But when, when I say that, some of those are gonna be the reverse plan. Because when you master file, you can't take a master filed plan and say, you know, we're gonna reverse this. You actually have to have the drawings. So this will be 10 sets of architectural drawings, but some of them are gonna look very similar.
Okay.
And as far as the elevations go, does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay. And then, also, this really has to do with the cottage ordinance. Would there be any things that would keep someone from using one of these on a conforming lot?
No. That, that's not how we're proposing it. It would be for conforming lots as well.
But, but there's nothing to say somebody couldn't put this one on a regular lot, right?
No, no, there's, it, it's for the non-conforming lots to take advantage, but not to preclude the conforming lots from using the program, so they would be eligible to. And one thing I want to add is discussion with Jerry, as we've been looking at this, we just kind of, with, meaning what building department and all of that, decided to make all of them handicap accessible. Because there's many different things, you know, that, that you'd have to consider, but also the aging in place to be able to sell these as units that, you know, could be for aging in place. So all of them are gonna be sized to be handicap accessible, and there will be an additional sheet. So for each one of these, if it needed to be built as a handicap accessible unit, they would be able to be.
Okay. Does that mean they'll all be one-story, or there'll still be some two-stores?
There'll be, still be some two-stores. It's actually one and one and a half is what we're really looking at now, is we're looking at the size of the lots. Not to say that there won't be one, two-story, but we're, we're still kind of doing the mapping and seeing what lot sizes we have and setbacks, and we're still working through all that. So, to get the square footage, because all of these will meet the minimum square footage requirements. So we're not designing any that are gonna be less than the allowed square footage.
Okay, so it's not just a matter of going and drawing house plans, it's having to map the site.
Yeah, and some of the-
Figure out what kind of house plans could actually be used.
We're doing GIS mapping for the entire city, and some of these non-conforming lots will still be too small. So they, not every non-conforming lot is gonna be eligible, but many of them will be.
And just to point out, that's throughout the entire city.
It's a citywide project, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
If I were a developer, would I be able to apply to build some of these?
The idea is there would be master filed drawings, so very similar to like a subdivision development, where, you know, a property owner could pick the plans, and then it would go on a particular lot. So the city would have the drawings, and they would be, be available really to anyone who wants to build on one of these lots. So anybody could do that. Anybody who has land could participate in it if it's on one of these identified lots.
And to further- Get their own developer.
Yeah.
Right. We, the city's not funding, well, with the exception of potentially the cottage lots, and we'll, you know, when we get to that, we'll have that discussion. But these would all be privately funded by private, you know, property owners or developers.
We're just giving them the authority.
So what are the cottage lots, you said, other than the cottage lots?
I'm sorry?
You said something about all of these will be available to private people other than the cottage lots.
Well, no, I was saying, we talk about the Little Red Schoolhouse site. I mean, there's probably potential, when we get to that, that, that might be a public-private partnership. So with this exception of those, they're all gonna be, you know, privately developed.
Because that's, that's publicly, that's the city-owned lot.
Right.
But to further to Commissioner Williams, this will allow people that right now have undersized lots to be able to pick up one of these drawings and get a private developer or private builder to come in. And because it's with the city, they'll know that there'll be an easier process to get through the city's permitting process.
But if I had a lot that was non-conforming, and one's doing it myself, which has nothing to do with the cottages, would I be able to do that?
Yes, and that's, that's the primary purpose of it.
No, she's saying that she doesn't want to use those plans.
No.
So that, that can happen-
Could follow the current process.
Right, the current process in place, anybody could develop their property, but if it's non-conforming, they have to go through a conditional use process. So they're paying a $1,500 fee, they have to submit their drawings, they have to go to Planning and Zoning Commission. So that takes time. It's kind of an intimidating process to people. So the idea of this is, if you want to bypass that, we're giving you an option to bypass it.
I could still do it if I did not want to do that.
Right.
I still could do it. I would still be given the same kind of consideration.
Well, you'd have to go through the conditional use process.
Yes, conditional use process.
But having, if, if, if the private person chose to use one of these designs, they could bypass that, because the city's already given approval to these plans.
Okay, but I couldn't get any consideration if I wanted to use another plan. So you're saying that all the people that will be given that consideration are people who will participate in this plan?
Who will use?
These are pre-approved plans, so they can walk in and pick, pick the plans already approved. If you brought in a house plan, then you get it, it's still, it's gotta be approved as a new, as a new plan.
Right, that's why we're doing all this GIS mapping up front, because we define all the lot sizes, we define all the setbacks for every single one of these lots. It's a lot of work we're doing up front that makes it easier on the back end. So if, if you came in and you had house plans that weren't, that haven't gone through the building department or anything like that, then at that time, staff would have to do the work for those specific designs. But having the master filed designs, we've already done that on the front end, and that's how we're able to bypass them.
The private owner could whatever they want, but if they decided not to use these plans, they just have to go through the process through planning. But there's a cost to that and a time element.
Right.
But they certainly could.
But so if I use whatever the city's gonna come up with, then I don't have to pay certain fees?
Correct.
You don't even have to go through the conditional process, conditional use process, because it will already have been approved upfront by-
But it's only approved of college, college type.
For the designs that are being developed, yeah, for the 10 designs.
Approved for all properties undersized, except the under-under-sized ones. But it's not just for Little Red Schoolhouse, it's throughout the entire city. If you have an undersized lot and it meets the qualifications, you can use these plans if you want to.
But if I don't want to use the plans, I don't get any consideration?
You then have to go through the normal process, which you can do, it's just there's a cost to it and a timeframe.
So you're forcing me, consideration that you're giving me is based on forcing me to use a cottage plan?
Well, that's why there's gonna be 10 variations that you can look at, and if you don't like those 10, then you can have your own. But if you do go with one of the 10, it does alleviate some of the work of staff, and therefore, you don't have to pay some of the fees. But you don't have to. You can go through a regular process, but that would cost the 1,500 plus the time for staff to review it. So the city's coming up with options that if you choose, you are already ahead of the process, but you're not required to choose any of the city plans.
And what we've talked about internally is if these have already had the building department review, and we've done all this mapping ahead of time, is that then it really just gets down to site review, and that we could potentially turn around a site review in about two weeks. So somebody who has a vacant lot can come in and choose one of these plans, and two weeks later have a building permit in hand, which is, you know, time is money, so that's a big incentive right there.
And if it wasn't, if they, if they wanted to have their own, what's the estimated timeframe?
Just, well, it would be the conditional use process. So they would have to start with DRT and then go through Planning and Zoning Commission and all of that.
So your estimate time would be, instead of two weeks, it would be-
About 90 days.
About what?
90 days. And that's, you know, if they give us perfect drawings at permit time and there's no revisions. So it could be more than that, depending on the quality of the drawings that they provide to us.
And they'd also have to pay for those drawings from a private company.
Well, they'd have to hire an architect or something.
Right, so that's the advantage. But if it's private property, they can choose whomever they want, but they'd have to then go through the process. So this is to make it easier for property owners of undersized lots to get those lots developed, but it's not a requirement.
It's forcing me, if I want to be given that consideration, it's forcing me to use the plans.
You would have various options, and-
10 different options. All right, any other questions, Christine, on that? No? Okay.
All right, the next one also is Ms. Dalton, who said Sanford Historic Trust sign proposal.
Tell, tell me, before you get started, okay, we approved a year, year, two years ago, what, we approved the EGRIT?
The IBIS. The IBIS? Those were place name signs?
I was so close, it's so far away.
Those were place name signs in the historic district that were, you know, in different locations, not really set locations. They kind of randomly throughout the district, identifying the name of the district. This new proposal is also for place name signs, but these are at the tops of the street signs.
Okay.
So if you could just envision, you know, the street signs, and the very top blade would actually have at all 88 intersections in the historic district, these signs.
Okay, so the EGRIT or the IBIS is, like, the picture that you show, where would the IBIS be on this?
Those were already approved, and they're already up. Those are on light poles. The proposal that you have in front of you-
Say no more. Thank you.
Okay.
That was my confusion. So, okay, I'm good.
Yep.
And this had been approved by HPB in 2015, but what had happened was there was a change to actually the size of the street IDs. And so with their previous approval, the signs that they were creating would have been too small. So they redesigned it actually in several ways. They made them larger to now match with our larger street IDs. And then they also redesigned the bottom of the blade, because before, they, there would have been like metal fasteners here that were kind of bulky. So they actually, we worked with Streets, Public Works, to come up with a design that these can be fastened without any visible fasteners. They're actually riveted, they will be riveted through the existing signs, so it winds up being a much cleaner install, and it actually saves them money and it saves us time, and it makes them stronger and wins and all of that. So there is a little bit of redesign involved.
Okay. And this is fully paid for by?
The trust.
The trust?
The city agreed to do the install if everything was provided to them. And the install would be done, you know, they can't expect that it's gonna be done in a month. So there's a full understanding that these are gonna be phased install.
Okay. As they get some time to, okay. And it's been approved by?
HPB.
HPB. Any other approvals that need to go through before it comes up?
And they're actually, the trust is gonna order probably about a dozen extra, just in case any get damaged or what have you. So they've committed to that.
Do you know what the total cost commitment from the trust is?
I was at a meeting where they said what it was, and I don't recall, but it's under 10,000, but it's over 5,000. I wanna say the figure was like 7,200 or something like that, if I'm not mistaken.
Good for them. I like it. I think it's cool. So as long as our guys are good with the engineering and doing it, I'm okay. You okay, Norman?
Yep.
Anybody else? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanna ask, because how much of the Red School budget would be used for this particular project?
50,000?
50,000.
Okay.
For coming up with the design.
No, not anymore.
Back at the other one.
Cottage.
The cottage, how much would be used?
It was 50,000, and that you all had agreed to.
So we pay for a developer designer to come up, an architect to come up with the plans, and then present them to the city commission for approval.
I've been working with Jerry Mills, because he's our continuing services architect, so with, working with finance and all, it just made more sense to do that. And that's, so he's actually done a great deal of preliminary work. We've met with the building department multiple times to go through the master file process and all of that. He's actually come up with a couple of floor plan sketches, and he hasn't gotten paid anything yet. So that's why we're trying to do the budget amendment, so.
And this is something that the commission has discussed.
Other question I wanna ask, will any of this money be utilized for the East Side Community Center that we've been talking about?
That is still to be determined.
How long are we gonna take to determine that?
I'm not spending a dime until we own it, to be honest with you.
Okay, when do we plan to own it?
Oh, you weren't at that meeting? It could be forever.
Yeah, we're, we're actively pursuing a swap trade with them. The first one doesn't seem to look like it met their criteria or satisfaction, so we're looking at another option, which might be viable, with one of our, one of our older pieces of property that we use as surplus. They're also, they came back to us, and just kind of long story, they came back to us and wanted to use the big building there as storage and give us the two back buildings that need to be demolished. We went back and forth, it didn't really fit, and told them it didn't really fit. So they're going back with CFO and the property and Walt, property manager and Walt, to determine how much actual storage stuff they need to keep. They're like pack rats from the sounds of it. And so we found another piece of property via Tom, George, and everyone that, that they were gonna take a look at, because they don't really need anything gray, that we may be able to finally get to the swap point.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. George has been working on it since that joint meeting, and you've basically summarized everything, just to see if there's anything you want to add.
It's very doable, depends on, I haven't met back with their facilities, so if they will take what they said they would take, it's, we can, we can, we can make it happen, but it's gonna take a little bit of investment in the building we own right now.
They also said that they, they didn't see themselves doing it without some cash. I don't know if that could change. I got the feeling it wasn't gonna happen next month, I'll tell you that. It was-
I have a pretty good feeling that they just sold a property that was, that they had a valuation of $1.8 million, and they sold it for $250,000.
Really?
So this dollar-for-dollar piece, I'm waiting to see if we can figure it out. But the whole dollar-for-dollar taxpayer money is absolutely thrown out the window by the contract they just signed for the old, the old museum. And so, not to be on record, if anybody wants to hear this, I will be bringing that to their attention at some point in time when Dee Dee Schaffner, who is currently running for reelection, decides to hold a, oh, gun in my head, no. Decides to hold the line on it.
I have a question. Are we done with that conversation?
I'm done.
I have a question for Mr. Colbert.
I think we've done it with Little Red Schoolhouse.
No, no, we're not. Mr. Colbert, I have a question for you. I just heard Christine say that, you know, Mr. Mills has a continuing architectural contract with the city. Mr. Mills also sits on our P and Z. Is that not a conflict of interest, that this will be something certainly that the P and Z will be approving, but Mr. Mills is the architect designing them, and you're gonna say, well, he can recuse himself, and I know that, but it, it, it always bothers me when we get the tangled web going.
You just answered the question the way I would answer it.
Okay, he can recuse himself. Still, it's just a little, feels a little funny.
Yeah, okay.
Just something happened in terms of the East Side Community Center.
Oh.
I'm just, it's gonna happen, but it's-
I agree wholeheartedly.
It was a painful meeting.
Okay, all right.
Maybe if Commissioner Williams-
I think what I heard Commissioner Mahoney says was a productive meeting.
Productive.
For the Sanford Times reporter behind you.
Yeah, it was fun. Okay, so that'll bring us to the sublease.
Yes, Mr. Thomas is at a meeting and couldn't be here. This is a continuation of leasing out the property that could potentially be the East Side Community Center. This is a great organization, sublease. This is a great organization, sublease, and it's for a dollar, so this is just corporate for you to finalize that.
And this takes them into?
So, I think to 2017.
I thought it was just-
But, we have rights, we have an outright-
No, I'm sorry, this takes us to expire in December of this year, of this year.
And it's no conflict with Express Lee U or anything that they're doing, or?
There's enough room in that building.
Okay, okay. And then, I guess my only concern is, when, just, because Express Lee U's dealing with so many children, this is also dealing with children. Okay.
Young people.
Yeah, yeah, and I just, when you have, when you have a lot of young people, I just want to be sure that it's an appropriate use.
And supervised appropriately, correct.
Okay, I'm good.
All right, the next item we've already talked about, and that is for the interlocal go, interlocal agreement with Seminole County for the CRA program manager.
Which we already went through.
Yes. So, under City Manager comments, just a couple of brief ones. One, I have invited the state attorney Phil Archer to come to a commission meeting, spoke at his office today, they're going to look at his calendar. And that's just in line with when we had Representative Bodir, we had State Senator Simmons, just having our elected officials come and just interact and share an update with the members of the City Commission. Secondly, on a unrelated item, I serve on the Board of Directors for the Florida City Community Management Association, and one of our charges is recognizing cities that have had the council manager form of government. It just so happens that this year is the 25th anniversary to Seminole County, having the council manager form of government, and I am scheduled to appear at their meeting tomorrow to present them with a certificate honoring them for having the plaque. We're kind of in between, I think we were in 1920, so we're like in the year 92 or something like that, so it's not an even year. But, in case you see, if I'm, if you hear that I was at the Seminole County Commission meeting tomorrow, that's what I'm doing, is presenting it to them.
Oh, how neat.
And then, it's-
And while you're there, I think I saw, never mind, we'll try to keep it cheery.
And speaking of cherry, next week I plan to be on vacation, so I'll send out an email, but 4th of July weekend, I plan to be on vacation.
I, I had heard that Chairman Haran had asked for the minutes to the meeting, the joint meeting we had with the school board, so I, I saw that they, they may, I don't know exactly what time they may be discussing that, so.
I don't think I'll be there for that.
What would be here?
You happen to be.
What would be here, interesting?
I'm sure Seminole County wants to give us a bunch of money to help out.
Better pull it out from underneath.
That's what-
Okay.
That's it, just Russ is explaining that we have copies of the information that was requested.
Stella sided with the-
Oh, yes.
Four impact fees, the city collects, yeah, highlighted with the total amount written at the bottom.
Yep, got it.
Yeah, I presume that permanent fees are not defined as impact fees.
Right.
Right, so, very briefly here, it's $698,000, $640,000, $650,000 in impact fees, city impact fees, so half of that would be $349,000, $320,000, $325,000, and I apologize for my terminology.
Oh, better than mine, okay.
Okay.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
And if you'd like me to be at seven o'clock?
You're welcome to go and have a nice dinner, or head back to Atlanta, whatever you know to do.
Are you driving back to Atlanta tonight?
No, I actually have meetings in the morning in Tampa, so I'll head over there tonight.
But, I did indicate to Mr. Giovanni that he should ask the commission whether they thought his presence was needed at the seven o'clock meeting.
I do not believe your presence in meetings.
I don't think so either, but John, I'm counting on you. We talked a long time ago about how that building looked like Central Florida Regional Hospital, and you were taking care of that, remember?
We did, we went through, I counted back from, from the city, we changed some of the colors and we gave it some more architectural features, so it wasn't a flat building. Yeah, we remember.
Because seriously, what you've done out there on, on international is very attractive, and I, I think Sanford deserves equal.
I think you'll be very happy with it. Thank you. Thank you for your time today.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Nice meeting you. Nice meeting you.
Unless, oh, you have a question?
Sure.
And I don't really want a lot of discussion, because of the time, but at some point I think there should be some serious discussion, and that is, well, first of all, since I was one of those commissioners who voted, because I felt that developer, developers had the rights, and I always want to respect developers' rights, and, you know, I was one of those who voted to give Mr., he has an Italian name, I think, I can't think of the name, the owner of the Marina.
Sarasota?
Sarasota. Okay, I was one of those who verified by giving, respecting his rights. Okay, and I am at this point wondering, did I make the right decision? Because I don't see anything going on. And then, I, I think I received something from documentation where he had not paid the taxes, and he had not done this, that, the other, and somebody sent him a letter, you ought to, now both of you, that if you don't do this, we, we're going to do 1, 2, 3. I don't see us doing 1, 2, 3.
Well, he has paid the taxes.
Oh, okay, he's paid the taxes.
He has paid the taxes for this year?
Yes. And the mayor's actually met with him.
What I'm getting kind of fed up with every year.
Yeah.
Do you understand, we have to deal with this.
And we can deal with the legal, he, he stays within the perimeters of the law.
He stays within the perimeter, so I might not have made a good decision. Because as I said, I don't see anything happening out there. And this is what those people who were not in favor are saying, nothing's going to happen. Next year, you're going to see the same thing. You know, so, I don't know, but we got, we have to find a way to push his button or to push whatever you do, you know, to get him to move on it, or else we do what we need to do.
Again, the mayor's had a recent meeting with him, and I think the mayor's probably expressed your sentiments to him.
Oh, okay, I just, okay.
No, it's, it's, we have prime property, and that Marina is the primest of the prime.
Sure.
And to see nothing happening there is very disheartening.
Okay, I just wanted to-
Absolutely.
I hate to admit, you know, you hate to admit when you make a mistake, but to ask the law to order my steps, and he ordered my step to publicly state to this commission, you know, my position.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, can I bring, Bill Popper?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just want to let you all know where we are with Hopper. The way the state works is, the last payment from the state will not receive until the project is completely done, and all the bills are paid. And so, for us, that means $86,422, I think, that we have to be able to front and make all the payments, and then after all that's done, submit that to the state and we repay that money. Now, we were able to, to get some financing through someone, but they are charging us 18% interest on that money. And it's a loan that we need for two, maybe three months. And several people that we approached suggested that I bring it back to the city to see if that was a, a loan the city would be able to make, to save us a couple of thousand dollars in financing.
So, if you, when they reimburse you, you can put it back into the budget. Find the money to do it, as simple as that. We don't need a whole lot of discussion about it.
Yeah, it was making a loan.
Find the money to do it.
And we, and so, as soon as you get the CO, for all intensive purposes, you submit to the state, the state turns around and reimburses.
Well, I wouldn't say they turn around.
Well, in government, governmentese.
In government, turn around.
Yeah, it's a wide berth turn.
Ooh. But, yes, once they're satisfied, everything is done, they'll make the final payments.
Any legalese there on that, where you can tie it into the grant? I know you can't actually, I don't know if you can actually attach it to the grant, but that upon payment of the grant, final deal that you can-
Hopper is individually owned, right? I mean, this is the first I've heard of it, but just thinking about it, I think they could give a mortgage to the city with a term, three months or six months or whatever the city wanted to do. And, the city could loan the money to be repaid upon receipt of reimbursement from the state, and if for some reason the city didn't get paid, the city would have the right to foreclose the mortgage, just like a bank.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think it should be memorialized in some way, because it's public funds.
Yeah.
And that's- I agree.
Probably the better way to do it.
Can we memorialize that downstairs?
Well, in-
Or do you need? I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, I think we can, if we need to, we can either wait until the next meeting.
Okay.
If you wanted to have something written in front of you rather than, because if I was sitting on your side, I would be saying I'd like to see it in writing before.
I mean, I feel comfortable, because I know that the grant's out there, and we've put our 50% into the grant, and I understand how, how all that works. Biggest part is you guys getting your CO and it being approved by our Building Department.
Right.
Commissioner Woodruff also shared with me that this, and my initial reaction was that this sets a precedent.